I'm going to convene a special meeting of the planning commission to address the Terriffill neighborhood plan. So, um, we have a couple of commissioners who are not here. So, we're going to seat Angel and Nick as regular members, um, tonight. All right. So, thank you all for coming. We're all very excited to have you here and to hear about, uh, the plan. This is not a public hearing, but we are going to be open to hearing comments, um, afterward. If, um, if people, uh, have quick comments, um, on the plan. All right.
Thank you again for coming. I have Robert, uh, from SLR here, and he will present the draft, uh, final plan for Terriffill.
You're turning it over.
Yes, yes.
Okay, well, uh, you know, kind of an informal presentation because as I know, um, Brittany and, um, George forwarded, um, to you, I think, late last week, um, the draft plan. And so, our, our main focus tonight is to initially to just, uh, give you a quick overview. Also to see if you have any initial comments. Um, talk a little bit about like how we may receive more comments from you, like maybe through like another week or so. Um, and then really kind of talk about like the final steps, um, which I think Brittany will probably really kind of talk with you about as you were kind of alluding to, um, as far as like, uh, uh, what the, the very final stages will be. Um, in the neighborhood plan, um, the graphic, like what you're seeing now is more kind of like the graphic presentation of the plan. Because pretty much everything that's in the plan, other than, you know, some of the more text that's been, uh, um, developed in a little bit more detail is all items that have been presented to both the community as well as to the planning commission and available on the website. Um, if you just, can you scroll to like the table of contents? So, the introduction is just a, kind of like a quick snapshot of like, you know, what the process has been over the last, um, three quarters of a year. Talks a little bit about the community engagement and like what the plant, what a, like a neighborhood plan is. Um, and then the data inventory analysis, that's really a summary of the study area profile that was presented. You know, it talked about the demographics of the community, had some comparison data. It also talked about that's where the market, um, and, um, economic kind of information that was presented initially. And then the analysis was the site analysis map that was presented at one of the, um, the meetings. And then the, the information that was on that. The actual, uh, chapter three, which is the Terriffill neighborhood plan itself, begins with the vision statement. Um, that was, um, all, you know, reviewed at the beginning of this year and agreed to as, as well as the, the theme areas. And then the rest, the rest of chapter three then goes through those recommendations that were presented at the late March, um, community meeting. Um, with a, you know, a little bit more explanation text. And in some cases, that's where you end up seeing example graphics and pictures and things like that. That will help guide those specific recommendations in the future to getting, um, implemented. Um, and then the last section is the implementation piece, um, which really kind of, you know, puts all those recommendations into a table format. Um, and kind of gives, uh, responsible entities within the town and the community as well as timeframe. And that's something that, um, Brittany and, uh, George are continuing to work on and also involve the community. Um, are there any like overarching questions initially from like your initial review or, or anything like that? Or any edits that you may have already or planning to?
I thought it was really well done. I just want to say, I thought it was thorough. It had a lot of information, pulled in a lot of the community work that you did. So, I just overall, um, I, I thought it was really, really well done.
Right, well, thank you very much. And, you know, we appreciate all the, um, involvement by town staff and, um, so within the community that helped, enabled us to get to that point. Um, one other comment that I forgot to make is that, you know, one of the last kind of steps is also to kind of fine tune, um, some of the pictures. We do have some good ones. I know that the cover photo is still being discussed. Um, and we did want to make sure that we mentioned that if anybody, um, you know, on the planning commission or town staff or the community, if you have any pictures, we need them like immediately. So, if they're good quality and you want recognition for any pictures that you've taken or like if you, you know, have a chance to review the plan and you're like, oh, I have a perfect one of like, uh, people engaging at Town Green or something like that, we'd love to incorporate that. Um, but the sooner we get those pictures, the better, obviously.
And they can email me, right? If you have any pictures, feel free to send them to my email address.
Robert, why don't you go, why don't you go to the bulk of the plan?
Sure, I think that's-
And just, you know, um, just kind of not, just not walk through the detail, but, but go to each of the topics and just, you know, talk everybody through how you, how we got to where we got.
Sure. And like I said, that was the big, big overview in the end. So, Brittany, you, if you can kind of move the slide forward. So, again, the introduction section that I think-
Yeah, 'cause I wouldn't wear everybody out with the introduction stuff, but-
Yeah.
I would go to the four topics and just go through them.
Sure. So, that, like I said, we'll just kind of go through the pages really quickly here. This is just the introduction, you, um, if you keep going. And it just talks about the community engagement, um, kind of summarizes that. And then it goes into the next section, which then is the data. Yeah, you can kind of go kind of quickly. So, this is, um, you know, a little, it starts with a little bit about the history and the information that we gathered. Um, some initial pictures, um, some of the nationally recognized resources. We're, we're making sure they're very promoted and that's, that case is the historic district. Then we get into Terriffill today and this, you know, we talk about the demographics. Um, zoning, uh, map is included, um, a summary, a description of the existing zoning. Um, it goes into land use and describes the existing land use. Again, most of this, this stuff was all, um, indicated in this study area profile. Um, some pictures about some of the existing land use. Um, and then we get into the demographics, um, some takeaways about the housing. The green boxes also, just real quickly, that is a some, um, there's some spotlights from the survey that was taken. So, we've kind of included some of that survey related data that's associated or information that's associated with that subject. Um, some graphic, uh, takeaways, um, pictures, and then the employment and market conditions. Um, and then, uh, that's talking about the market segments with some infographics. And then the transportation network summary. Um, and then the natural resources, recreation assets and amenities summary. Obviously focusing on the river, the Terriffill Gorge, um, and, and the nationally recognized resources. Um, that there are three in this section. Um, and from, you know, a summary about the park, um, about the various trails, which there, you know, there's numerous, which all kind of start to build the case for the outdoor recreation economy proposal. Um, and then it, again, it, like I said, it ends with the village, um, more detailed site analysis. This is a summary, and then this is a site assessment map that was, had been previously presented. Um, and then that, and then the specific, um, uh, si- site assessment points are noted here. Again, building the case for the recommendations. And then, um, then we get to, um, the end of that section. And then this was the vision statement that the community, uh, that we worked out and the community confirmed, as well as the theme areas, which included the, uh, village character being theme area one. Um, theme area two was outdoor recreation. And then three was, um, the mobility, um, connectivity. Um, and then the fourth theme area was economic vitality. And then each one of those theme areas is then described in more detail. This is the beginning of the village character. And then each one of the recommendations is, is highlighted with a discussion and then some of the specific recommendations for that. And then there's associated maps. Um, there will be, um, those are the graphics for the gateways as well as for the streetscape. Um, that will be in place shortly. Um, and then, you know, they, they will look kind of like this where this is the one that's related to the discussion about, um, crosswalks and things like that. So, it's kind of showing, um, a map and detailed information about that. Um, then there's also some chara- example, um, uh, you know, examples to be considered when those projects move forward with things like brick sidewalks and, and crosswalks and some other like, um, streetscape character images. This one's about signage, wayfinding and branding, as you might recall. And there's recommendations. It shows some of the existing signage that's in the community. It can be considered when, um, that's, um, uh, taken to the next step. Um, the map shows the various different locations, um, for that wayfinding and signage locations. Then the next recommendation is about the village district zoning, uh, regulations and updates that we talked about. Um, and this one just goes through the very specifics recommendations for the sub-districts that would be included in that zoning update, um, the boundaries and then some other considerations related to parking, um, as well as, um, some of the environmental sustainability and, and environmental considerations that should be put into those zoning regulations or connecting with, um, uh, regulations that already exist, uh, within the town. Um, and then, uh, the last recommendation, or I think the second to last one in the village character is the style guidelines and architectural aesthetics recommendation. Talks about the, uh, design guidelines and how to connect them. And then the last one is about the property maintenance and beautification efforts. And then connecting to some of the existing programs and, um, focus on that. Um, for both public property as well as private property. The outdoor recreation theme, um, then, you know, really starts to capitalize on the, the outdoor recreation, um, and natural assets of the community. Um, it gives a brief overview of that, of this theme area. And then it goes through again the various recommendations, which includes the first one is the river access and river views to the Farmington River, um, with the recommendations. Um, it also talks about, you know, the specific ra- access points, uh, within Terriffill Park as well as some of the other, uh, nearby or connected ones, like the Mill Property, for instance. Um, and also from Main Street Extension. Um, and then some of the, uh, nearby, um, Curtis Park as well as, um, the one that's in East Krampy. It kind of shows how those can also come into play and what they look like currently. Um, and then this is the map that goes and specifically tar- uh, of spotlights those river views as well as the access points. Um, then this is an example of what the, um, uh, visuals, um, graphic, uh, recommendations will look like for, uh, this one is for the, specifically for river, uh, views and access. Um, and that's, that, you know, and it kind of gives like an overview of all the recommendations that are in the, on the previous page. Um, and there's one for both the, um, Main Street Extension location as well as, um, the Tungus Road Terminus, uh, section, which is actually this one. I do have a replacement page to give you that actually shows the one that was on the previous page that was missing, so you can see both of those together. And there's the, uh, the recommendation about the trail networks and making those, um, connections. Um, the map that kind of shows the various options for making those connections to those existing trails. Um, shows some of the specific locations, the way they are now. Um, it then talks about the, uh, again, some of the regional, uh, trails, like the Newland National Scenic Trail. Talks about like just some of the signage for some of the trails, giving some examples. And then, uh, the last part of their outdoor recreation specifically talks about Terriffill Park first. Where, as you might recall from the recommendations, and, uh, the first recommendation for Terriffill Park talks about connecting with the ongoing maintenance, um, and improvements, uh, associated with the Sims, Palace, Simsbury Park and Open Space Master Plan and continuing to make those. Um, this map just kind of shows those various, uh, parks, which includes the Village Green. Um, and then, um, the other recommendation for the park for long term is to, uh, after kind of completing those initial maintenance and items from the, um, um, town's master plan is then to actually do a very specific Terriffill Park master plan to kind of carry it into the next phase. With some specific act, recommendations, um, and examples, um, which includes all of these items. And it also shows some different examples and suggested types of, um, theme items for the park. And then the Village Green is also included here with, you know, continuing to make improvements at accessibility and to the town green. Uh, the third theme area is the multi-mobility, connectivity and safety. Um, again, the first one is talks about, you know, the pedestrian facilities, uh, making some specific recommendations, but also following up on some, um, ongoing initiatives. Shows some, the map shows very specifics about like what, uh, pedestrian improvements should be focused on. Um, or, um, as we talked about at the open house, and this map just kind of summarizes those items. Um, some of the maps show some of the specific connections. And some of the destination points, um. And then this one is, uh, you know, talking about specifically coordinating with, um, Connecticut DOT related to, um, Route, uh, three fifteen, which we know is very crucial and important. Uh, we know that there's always been some conversations and dialogue, but that needs to be very focused. And hopefully with everything we heard from the community that we've included as far as, um, um, specific points, um, can be brought up at those types of, um, soon to be future meetings. As well as some of those improvements that we know that Connecticut DOT, um, you know, allows or permits on state roads. Um, so hopefully some of these examples will help guide those to fruition. Um, then on the local roads, um, you know, the town of Simsbury is responsible for. There's the discussion about further traffic calming, you know, for both roadway but also for, um, bicycle facilities as opposed to the pedestrian facilities, which were in the first recommendation. This talks about, you know, conducting, um, a study with the town staff. Um, and then kind of implementing appropriate traffic calming after a, a more detailed study has been done. This just shows some examples, um, both of demonstration projects that could potentially happen. Um, just to, related to traffic calming as well as some of the traffic copying type of, um, initiatives that could be implemented. Um, and then the last theme area is the economic vitality. Really tying to the, um, you know, trying to make local economy as robust as possible. And in the first recommendation, it's really focusing on helping to guide some of those like types of local businesses, um, or uses that could be really beneficial to that outdoor recreation as well as the daily needs of the community. Um, and there's recommendations for the zoning uses that could be made sure to be incorporated into zoning recommendations. Um, and then also, uh, making those strong connections with some of the local business community as well as the Economic Development Commission. Um, and then also this section, you know, we know public parking and making sure that that gets promoted and identified is going to be very crucial. Um, and then the last part, you know, this is then really focusing on, um, building that outdoor recreation economy that we talked about with the, with the community and at, uh, previous meetings. Um, and then this kind of lays out that strategy to, um, you know, to slowly start to build on, uh, successes on that, some past experience, um, but taking it to the next level, um, to bring that, uh, outdoor recreation economy to, uh, forward with some of the specific recommendations. Okay, and so that's a, that's a quick summary of the, you know, and a reminder about the recommendations. And then, you know, as we said, there will be this implementation section. And then that will, the implementation table that, you know, we have been, that we've shared with, uh, Brittany and George that we're, you know, going to be working on further, takes each one of those recommendations with some of the specific either action steps or pro- projects and kind of puts them down so that they can start to be plotted out over time. And the goal would be to clearly identify the responsible entities, which may be town staff or other departments or commissions or boards. Um, and then also, um, community partners, um, not only the community, um, the village association potentially, um, but also the business community. Um, and then the suggested timeframe would be short term, you know, medium term and long term. Okay?
The only thing I wanted just to offer about, about the implementation piece is, so, you know, when you go through the document, you find that you've got, you come up with all these ideas. The great, you know, the good. The fact is that the ideas are not fiscally constrained.
Right, right.
So, we, we, you know, it's, um, so we want to work further with the neighborhood. And we've got to include our public workforce as well as the board of selectmen a little bit because they are, you know, there's no reason to have, you know, thirty-two items that cost a hundred and twenty-five million dollars, right? We want to, we want to, we want to identify the things that are most needed, you know, immediate and then, you know, later and then longer term. And that just takes an additional process. And I think we're, we're just going to do that as staff with the community and with, with, with you guys and with the board of selectmen, you know, kind of in addition to this, to this draft document. So, the draft document gives us a whole little, a bunch of implementation items. And we have to, we have to really work a lot closer, take a lot more time, be more sensitive to who we're really going to pick and choose that we can actually accomplish.
Yeah.
And what's most important to everyone. So, that's, that's, that's the plan with implementation.
I just want to say that for me, one of the most gratifying parts about this is how closely we've been able to work with the Terriffill community. Because the Terriffill community is very well known for being quite involved with, with very good ideas. And that, um, I feel good that we, we've not only taken input, but in implementation, as you just laid out, it will be with, you know, with the community prioritizing it.
Does anybody on the commission have any questions, comments?
That was my comment.
Okay. Nick?
I'd like, I'd like to see the implementation table, but I, I think that's still in draft. So, we'll see that eventually, yeah.
Yep, it's still in draft form. But it does, it takes the recommendations, um, that you saw in each section and it kind of just puts it in a table. Um, and then we'll have, you know, the supporting departments and individuals and the, the timeline. And so, that's what we're going to work with, with the residents.
It'll be similar like we did with the P O C D and all that.
Yes, exactly, yep.
Okay.
You know, it might get done.
It's an idea.
And then hopefully the idea is once an implementation plan is all set, we would work with SLR to bring it back and making it part of the document. So, it's memorialized-
Sure.
-in the published final, final, yeah.
The last thing that I would say is just as, as George and Brittany have indicated, I mean, it, it should be, I think it is a long-term plan. I mean, I think it should be viewed as that, you know, it's like, but it's, it's important to get the, you know, to get everything down that's kind of desired and then to move forward. But having that view that it's a long-term plan and, but what are the quick wins, which Brittany and George will be working with the community to kind of identify? And then what are some things that might be just down the road a little bit further? But then what are some things that are going to take, you know, some real development or coordination? Uh, or maybe build on things that were, that happened earlier, you know? And I think, you know, like for instance, Terriffill Park is, I think, a good example is that we know that there are, you know, and we've incorporated some of the short term and some of the things that are happening now with that, build on that. But then there would be like a, a second phase of that, which would be more medium or long term.
Does anybody have any comments from the, you can just stay where you are. Yeah?
Yeah. Um, one thing that I, I haven't, well, first of all, I'll say that, that it really is terrific to see all the mapping out of, of Terriffill and of the different qualities that are there. Um, my, my kids went to Terriffill Elementary School, so I know, s- I, I know what the community sense that was there when they were there. Um, I have, I have one big concern and, and it's, it's actually, um, shown itself in the last, say, the last four weeks for sure. We have had two wa- water emergencies. Um, and as much as Terriffill Park is wonderful because it has, it has water there, we have a, a world-class whitewater right there. And my son used to come home from college with his whitewater kayak and do all the flips and stuff because he knew how. But we've already had two emergencies. I'm thankful that we have a boat, um, up in the Terriffill Fire Department and we have a boat in the, uh, Hot Meadow Street, uh, Fire Department. But I think that we have to make sure that we take safety into account and that people might not realize the danger that might not be seen. So, I, I, I would like to ha- to have that be part of the evaluation. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'd just like, who was it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, I'd just like echo, echo what you said, Erin, which is that, uh, it's a very well done, very comprehensive. And, um, it's one, it's one, the fact that it's a working document, you know? A long-term document, you know? It's really great.
Sherry?
Hi. I just want to thank everybody for all the work and time that they took and the professionalism and the concern and care that they took to put this all together. I started having meetings probably a decade ago, one-on-one even with Eric Womack and some other people about a number of these things. And the first time I met with you along with the two other past presidents, I had a really long list. I had a long list of, you said, what's your wish list, what are your concerns, whatever? And I threw it all out there and it's all in this report. It's like everything and then some expanded. So, I'm very pleased with how it's written. I pray that this is one of those things that we will have some wins and that we will see some of it be implemented. That's always after living in town for over four decades. That's always one of my concerns that I've seen things take a really long time. But I just really wanted to say how grateful I am that, um, it was listened to and just put together beautifully. So, thank you.
And just to comment on the implementation, when we did the P O C D and it, we adopted it, well, it became our document about a year and a half ago. One of the things that town staff and the commission worked on is we, we've put all this, these things in the P O C D. Now, now what, you know? And so, we've really held our feet to the fire and some of the other boards. And we meet quarterly with stakeholders from the land use boards. And people are talking about the implementation items in their meetings. And we've actually checked some things off, you know? So, we were, we're there looking at it, saying, what have we done? What are we doing? What are we ongoing? And so, if it's going to be a similar document, I, I have the utmost confidence we're going to be able to do something very similar. Or we're going to have these implementation meetings. We're going to be able to check those off, you know, yeah. Cause we, we want to see that we're, the work we did is producing something. I mean, right?
I, because our first couple of P O C Ds didn't get done quite- Well, I know, I remember sitting in on the first P O C D's meetings. And then when they started with the second one, I'm like, doing this again. But anyway, so, yeah, it is nice to see pro- progress. It's very exciting, so thank you.
And I'd like to give credit where credit is due. That is something that George has brought to the position is this implementation and focus on implementation and help us through the process of learning it.
Thank you, George.
Thanks, George.
I just wanted to add my congratulations as well. Thank the consultants and Brittany, of course. The document is just extremely well-written. I, um, I really can't say enough about it. The concepts have developed so well. Somebody really knows how to write, so I don't know who's responsible. Somebody really knows how to write, so I don't know who's responsible for all of it.
Somebody's smiling, so there you go.
I used to write a lot of reports, so, when I was gangling, but it's just so well, the concepts are so well-thought, you know, so well-written.
Well, we done, but also they listen to you, I think.
It is, it's, yeah.
That's the purpose of, is to study a recommendation of the community, what they envision the future of that part of the town. So implementation, when and how that's going to happen and how much it's going to cost, that's, I guess, the difficult part now, to get the ideas.
Oh, we'll get it done.
You will.
Yeah, it's good. Um, I'm worried about sex, this is my husband's shit, and again, it's, it's, it's done beautifully. One thing I want to let you know is my husband and I way back when were on, was on the steering committee for the Mediacoma Trail to become the Golden Scenic Trail. So this, it's nice to see, it is incorporated in there, because that's been our dream for a very long time.
Yeah, like twenty-five years.
And we'd like, we would like to see it, um, you know, be used like it should, National Scenic Trail. And, and for people to know about it. Absolutely.
Anyone else?
Steve?
No one?
I just had one note, actually I met a person from Tariville a couple of weeks ago that he never heard of that plan, which was surprising for me. You know, I thought that, uh, everybody was reached in the community, no mailings or in present into the meetings and so apparently there's still some, uh, residents that are not aware that something like this is going to happen.
Was there a mailing, is that, of the residents?
Oh, yeah.
We did, yep, yep.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Keeping the community safe.
I know, because it feels like so long ago.
It does, yeah.
Yeah, we, we, we looked at, um, public record and we found the addresses of all the housing in Tarifill.
Right, everybody with O six oh eight one got it, this was my, I was told.
Oh, good.
It's very frustrating though, because when you know that people won't read things and then complain that they didn't get it, so I feel badly, but I know we all got it.
Don't get me wrong, that they welcomed, you know, the ideas, uh, but they just said, oh, I never heard of this, anyway.
Good, yeah.
Maybe somebody else in the house read it, so. All right, George and Brittany, do you have any last minute?
So I think the, the idea is to take this draft, um, I do have a few hard copies that I'm, that I printed out. Um, and have any, you know, give it a good read-through and any edits you have sent to my way, um, and then we can incorporate those and bring it back to you for the adoption of it.
That's so cool.
Right, right.
Don't forget any pictures.
Yeah, I own pictures.
Oh, yeah.
I, I think pictures would be a big enhancement, I mean, I think you did a great job, and people have great pictures, especially some of the pieces that were taken in the winter, might look more prettier if people have some.
There was one that clearly was taken in the rain too, did you notice that one? There was what, yeah.
I mean, your pictures cover it all the right grounds, it's nice to have lots from the community.
Well, so a couple of, some of the pictures are from the internet, so we do need to replace them, you know, they were just kind of like holding places.
Yes.
So they can send those to you, Brittany, that people have pictures, okay?
It'd be nice to see, it'd be nice to see what you guys have.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be great.
Can we think of another?
Yeah, anything that anybody might have would be great, yeah.
I guess the picture should precede the final.
Right.
Thirty, um, like pictures or anything.
I was not, but I can be, is she a good?
I'll text her.
Okay.
When I leave from the meeting, I'll text her.
Okay, yes.
She's got millions of pictures.
Oh, great, great, great.
Yeah, but she's moved, I don't know what she did with, um.
Well, I'm sure there's digital, so.
Trash, what you moved to, I doubt it.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Well, without any other questions, I will adjourn the meeting at, uh, six thirty-four. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
For over forty years, S C M has been the voice of our town.
Bringing us together through local programming.
Education.
And live broadcasts.
S C M isn't just about television.
It's about empowering our community.
Ensuring our voices are heard during government meetings.
And celebrating milestones.
Like our high school graduations.
But today, S C M faces a challenge.
Our funding structure is based on television subscriptions.
It's no secret, people have been cutting the cord.
With a shift to internet-only subscriptions.
S C M receives less revenue.
Even though all our programming is freely available online.
We need your support.
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 Your donation can make a difference.
It will ensure that S C M remains open.
Continues to educate our youth. And keeps our community informed.
Thanks to S C M, I've been honing my creative skills, helping me work towards my college degree.
S C M is crucial for keeping our community connected.
S C M isn't just here to broadcast local events, they're actually preserving Simsbury's history.
Join us.
Join us in preserving Simsbury's voice.
Simsbury's voice.
Together we can ensure that S C M continues to thrive.
For generations to come.
Visit our website.
Or scan the Q R code on your screen to make your donation.
Every contribution counts.
Thank you for supporting Simsbury Community Media.
Where your town.
Your schools.
And your government.
Come together.